Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Could you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your dog?
Yep.
Okay. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the September 18th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kaylow has our dog from the kennel this morning.
Here, take a look. Let him see how good-looking you are. Our featured dog this week is about a year and a half old, female. She's a German Shepherd mix. She was a stray found around Delfield Road in Alariah Township. She's extremely friendly, great dog. Sit down a minute. Sit down. Give me your paw.
Aww.
There you go. She's available for adoption tomorrow.
Aww, she wants to go with you, Tim.
So get her. She's a great dog. We only have 23 dogs currently too, which is a great thing at our kennel, so we won't have to do any things we don't want to do, but stop by. She'd make a great addition to your family. Come on, let's go.
Make a great addition to your family. She loves you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk? I know, great dog, I'm telling you.
I'll do the swearing.
Yeah, let's do the swearing.
All of us?
Sure. I thought we had Jerry do a swear a minute. Do we need the microphone? Probably sitting here. Can you reach it?
You want to hold it?
All right.
Raise right here. Repeat after me.
Speak up, Teresa.
I. State your name.
I, Brian Moore.
Do some when you swear that I will.
Do some when you swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As.
As.
Deputy.
Deputy.
Dog warden.
Dog warden.
Of Lorraine County.
Of Lorraine County.
Ohio.
Ohio.
According to law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
To help me God.
To help me God.
Congratulations, work. Congratulations.
Under Resolutions, there are no Job and Family Services bills. Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Corporations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
Aye. So moved. I'm sorry.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Airport Accepted Grant Offer and Enter an Agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration for the Rehabilitate Taxi Ways A, B, and C and D Design Project. The maximum obligation under this offer shall be 176,400 for airport development and local share of 10% will be paid from the airport professional services account.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have a few potential new hires at the county home I'd like to discuss with the Board. Also, ongoing labor negotiations with United All Workers of America and the Department of Job and Family Services employees. And possibly the purchase or sale of real estate. All three of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Law for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of regular Board meeting today, we go into executive session, we talk about those specific items that I have identified. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading in the minutes of September 11th.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize the supplement of a CERN sublease and supplement and termination of CERN agreements of lease and sublease with Catholic Health Partners and our affiliates, and authorize terminations and connections with the release of CERN properties.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Create Fund 3441 Criminal Justice Services. Fund will be used to separately track new levy funds for the drug task force.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve the adjustment to 2014 tax budget to reflect revenue expenses for Fund 3441.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Children and Families, amend Resolution 13576, June 26, 2013, extending the contract with Catholic Charities Corp., effective until June 30, 2014, increasing by $81,342 for total contract amount of $108,456 for early intervention services Part C.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Community Development, amend NSP 3 agreement, City of Lorraine, for purpose of adjusting budgets and numeric goals in amount not to exceed 672,000. One, decrease the housing development LMMI activity from $114,000 to $240,000 to zero, thereby decreasing the pneumatic activity goal to zero. Increase acquisition rehab LH 25% set-aside activity from $168,000 to $265,781.71, thereby increasing the acquisition rehab numeric activity goal to three units. Three, add land banking activity in amount of $16,458.29, numerical of one unit. And four, decrease the numerical for the demolition activity from 34 units to 25 units.
So moved.
Second?
Do we have any discussion? Don, you want to talk about any of this? Anything you'd like to say? I mean, since it's our partnership and then we have Alariah following. Because all this language, I don't think anybody just understood that Teresa read off. This in regards to the NSP 3 funds where we partner with Lorraine and Alariah to rehab/demo.
Correct. What we are doing is based upon, we are now just a little over two years into the program, and these, we haven't touched our budget since. We've done very well on everyone being able to spend all their demolition money, and what we are now doing is moving funds around to better complete projects. The City of Lorraine actually feels more comfortable dealing with the lower income, the 50% or less of area median income, which 25% of the total grant had to go towards, and so what they did was they asked to swap out one group of rehab money that they had that wasn't enough to really do full houses, and put it all into the 50% or less category for rehab, which enables them to do something that they feel very comfortable with, and this came from the administration there. And then the City of Alariah as well, they're moving a fund that will assist them to complete full projects rather than partial. For Lorraine County, the net result is we also were able to move all of the money that we had for 25%, the 50% or less of area median income, we're able now to serve 120% or less of area median income. Just for reference, a family of four, that would be approximately $72,000 a year. So these are families that can afford a home. These are really strong middle-class, even, you know, upper-middle-class and working-class families that we can serve.
Some of this changes also because the land bank has been successful in the demolition program.
Extremely.
We've been able to use, move federal dollars to work that the land bank isn't currently hugely actively engaged in, which would be redevelopment of properties. That's another phase that's going to come down the road for the land bank, as you were all at the land bank meeting yesterday. But it's wise for these cities to move this money into redevelopment, leverage the federal dollars for that purpose, while we can use grant monies and AG money for the demolition, so it packages up real nice.
Thank you, Don. I just wanted you to understand what it meant in English.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Amend NSP 3 agreement, City of Alariah, for purpose of adjusting budgets and numeric goals in amount not to exceed 583,000. One, decrease land banking activity from 129,000 to 84,000. Two, increase the housing development LH 25% set-aside activity from 146,000 to 191,000. And three, decrease the numerical for land bank activity from five units to two units.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize purchase service agreement with El Centro Services Socials, Inc., Lorraine, for business, English, and work experience program for TANF participants for FY14 in amount of $24,292, effective October 1, 2013 through September 30, 2014. Authorize director to execute on behalf of Board and to amend for changes in programming content and increased value prosecutors approve as to form.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Transit, submit federal grant applications with FTA and other federal agencies for FY14 transportation assistance grants.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize various filings of applications with ODAT for FY14 transportation assistance grants.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under common pleas, approve a subsidy grant agreement in amount of $230,003 with the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction, Division of Patrol and Community Services, Bureau of Community Sanctions for probation improvement and incentive funding effective October 1, 2013 through June 30, 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Mr. Looby? Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm very pleased to appear before you today just to apprise you of the recent grant we received from the Ohio Department of Corrections, and our chief probation officer is here to answer any questions regarding the grant, if you have any.
Any comments on it?
Other than it's a great opportunity, there's no matching requirements from the county. It's referred to as a probation incentive grant. We're going to be getting the funds, approximately $230,000 over the next 18 months, and then it provides us the opportunity, if we're successful, to renew the grant, as well as get additional funds based on our success rates.
The incentive is to the department?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Didn't quite state that clear, that's why I was asking.
Yep.
Beth, any comments? Your 15 minutes of fame.
No, we're just, we're looking forward to the opportunity to provide programming to some of our offenders that can't get it right now in Lorraine County, just due to limited resources. So we're hoping to make not only them more successful, but to, you know, reduce the cost to incarcerate them when they're not. So that's the basis for the grant, and we're very happy that, you know, it was offered to us by the ODRC.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for...
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, approve and enter an agreement with Burgess and Niple to assist with preparation of bidding documents for Sugar Ridge Road Bridge 0214, North Ridge with an amount of $10,500 to be paid from the Engineer Project Bridge Account.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve and enter an agreement with City of Oberlin for Pile South Amherst Road Bridge 014 replacement project in amount of $368,000, and City of Oberlin will pay $272,320 with remaining county share of $47,840 to be paid from the bridge account.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Request NOACA to place two projects on transportation plan for federal funds authorized by the Engineer to execute on behalf of Board with prosecutors approve as to form. One, Pitts Road Bridge replacement fiscal year 19, total project cost 927,000, 80% LBR funding, 741,600, and MBGT 20%, 185,400. Two, guard rail upgrades fiscal year 18, total project cost 200,000, and 100% this supposed to be Highway Safety Improvement Program funding and CEAL.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kaylow?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Cordez?
Actually, I'm sure one of you will talk about the land bank in your report, so I'm going to have no further comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
Commissioners, I would like to have a discussion with you in executive session, one regarding an update regarding pending litigation, one a discussion of imminent new litigation, and one regarding a transfer of real estate property.
Goodness, your court.
As Mr. Cordez said, we had a land bank meeting yesterday. It was a very successful meeting. One of the things that did get brought up was the fact that we hired, we weren't going to hire one person to go around and maintain some of the vacant properties that are now vacant after demolition. What we had done instead was use intermittent three, two to three people, and then in the wintertime, those individuals could also work at our collection center, so there's no benefits being paid out. So I know Mr. Williams at the Township Trustees Meeting, you had mentioned that, how we were going to do it, and then maybe you could update them at the next meeting? Yep. As to how we're doing it now, because I think everybody was going to be much happier about the way we decided to handle that situation, so. And then, Mr. Cordez, do you want to do a synopsis of the meeting, since there was no one there to hear the great things that we're doing, that we're not really out of money, that we're waiting? Because there was an article in the paper that suggested that the land bank is broke, but we are waiting for additional dollars from the state.
Certainly, Commissioner. The land bank is not out of money. We're not even close to being out of money. We have revenues coming in, and our position that we've taken is one of strategic long-term success. We know that the Attorney General's Office is going to have another round of grant applications. Because Lorraine County has been wildly successful and has been praised by the AG's office as being the first community that received over a million dollars to exhaust their funds, we know we're going to be cued very positively for additional dollars. However, those dollars still will require a local match. Since we have spent all of our grant money and matched all of that grant money already, if we spend additional resources without using them to leverage additional dollars, we may find ourselves in a very challenging position when the grant rounds open without being able to match grant dollars, thereby not bringing additional leveraged dollars back to Lorraine County. So what we've done is adopted a posture of continuing to demo in those communities that have not seen demolition dollars to correct blighted homes in those smaller communities, and most of them are smaller ones, and having a waitlist in the larger communities where we've spent considerable resources already. That waitlist will be addressed. It will be taken care of, but it's going to take more time. We've also set aside a pool of funds for emergency demolitions. Sometimes some of these houses, they get set on fire, they have other challenges, and we can go in there and do an emergency demolition because we have funds for that. Now, I don't want to get crazy stupid thinking every one of them is an emergency situation. They've been there and they've been blighted for sometimes years, so we're going to take them on a case-by-case basis. But we're not out of money, we're not out of work, we're just looking at the long game rather than the immediate results. We've done 175-plus homes where we're working on collections for the liens, we're leaning properties, and we're starting to obtain properties to be redeveloped and placed back into productive use in the community.
Can you expound upon the fact that we go in there and demo the property, but we don't own the property, so the fact that we're going and maintaining it is actually just a...
It's a service.
A service to the various communities.
It's really a wicked situation. You go in, you demo, you do a renovation of the property. We're doing such a fine job, I really found out why the City of Lorraine always knew it was our demo, because we had challenged them since they were doing other demos, because some of their council people were complaining about tall grass. Well, how do you know it's our demo? And they said, "Well, your demos have new sidewalks and look better than the other demos do." Hadn't thought about that. They don't, they don't take out the curb cuts and the sidewalks and do the four corners like we do to leave it in a much more restored condition. However, the bigger problem that looms is that we don't own that property after we demo. We're the agent for the municipality, political jurisdiction, to conduct demolition. We abate the property, we demo it, we restore it, we green it. Thereafter, it's still owned by the original holders of the mortgage or the title to the property. Now, under certain stipulations within the regulations, we can go in and continue to abate the nuisance and cut the grass and do those similar functions. However, we're not required to. Now, we are trying to do that to take some of the strain off these communities, particularly Alariah and Lorraine. The smaller communities, there's only a handful of them, but in Lorraine, they have a lot of them. However, as I explained yesterday to representatives for the municipalities, it's not our responsibility to do that. It's a service. The responsibility lies with the municipality under their nuisance, grass ordinance, weed ordinances, and they would have to come in, order the mowing of that property, and then assess that property.
And we're also assessing a charge to a lien against the property for mowing, correct?
We are, but we're on the ragged edge of...
Never collecting.
Well, we're on the ragged edge of whether we should be there or not with regard to the regulations. So I originally wanted to operate under the city's regulations and have them put us as an agent and then give us a list of properties they wanted to have mowed and taken care of. And if you remember, I discussed that at Sheffield Village when we had the meeting out there, and we were hosted by the mayor, Mayor Hunter out there. But that looked like a very cumbersome process, and there was a little bit of resistance because it was going to be a lot of back-and-forth paperwork, so we went under a different statute and we're operating under a nuisance, but we're stretching that definition. There could be some problems with that down the road. Council is looking at that this week, and we'll see if we don't have to develop a different procedure. But when council people come in and they're in an open session and they're complaining to the mayor, "Well, this lot hasn't been mowed, that lot hasn't been mowed," I'm really disturbed when the mayor indicates that, "Well, that property belongs to the land bank." It doesn't belong to the land bank, and it is a responsibility of the city to ensure that their citizenry live up to their codes within the municipality, not the land banks. When the property does fully belong to the land bank or the Port Authority, we will definitely make sure that those lots are completely taken care of, but that inventory is going to be far less, and I'm going to say it again, far less than the amount of properties that we end up ultimately demoing. So we want to be good partners, but I want to place the responsibility where it belongs, and then I want to help those that need that assistance through the land bank and through the Port Authority. But I think a clearer definition needs to be put out there. And lastly, we're not stopping the work. I read the article in the paper, and I was getting calls, and as we learned yesterday at the land bank meeting, some of these communities are upset. They believe that, you know, the land bank, as you said, is bankrupt. Nothing could be further from the truth or accuracy.
I think it needs to be stated too, as at the beginning, our goal was to use up all the funds quickly so we can hopefully get money that other communities didn't...
Exactly.
Weren't able to use, but then they gave those communities an extension, so we still may not see those extra dollars.
And I believe eventually we will. They have, the AG has extended those deadlines for those communities. I was hoping that they would stay firm on their position, that those that were achieving success may get...
More money.
Money moved from those communities that weren't achieving success.
And that still may happen.
And it still may happen. That's why we're holding dollars to leverage.
Right.
We just want to know until January of 2014 with the extension, where we were hoping by November, when we had spoke to them, when the Attorney General was here, on when they're going to evaluate, that they have given extension to those land banks who have not used their money.
Correct. And so I have had communication with the Attorney General's Office. What I would like them to do is, from a certain point forward, allow a backlook for a match, similar to federal funds where you can match it with prior purchased property or...
Like we did with the train station.
Like we did with the train station. It was years before we used it as a match on federal dollars. So I'm trying to get them to look at activity between grant cycles that can be used as a leverage match to future dollars. If they do that, then we're going to get the shovels and the backhoes back out, we're going to be out there in a big way, because then we'll start banking our match dollars for future grant opportunities. But mindful, there's still two big grants that are out there that we're looking at.
The fund is big.
Sixty million?
Sixty million. There's two different funds of money out there. It's sixty million. And only land banks, those communities that formed their land banks, we have eighteen of them, I believe is the number, out there. Eighteen communities were able to get the job done, us being one of them, and nobody else could apply for those sixty million dollars.
Times two.
Times two.
Right.
It's going to require match dollars, and it's going to also require liquidity. You have to spend the money and then wait for it to come back in. I believe that at any one point, we may have three or four million dollars cycling to be able to stay fully submerged in grant monies that may become available to us. Therefore, we have to have a very cash-rich position. We can borrow, but we also have to pay debt service in that borrowing. We cannot continue to recapitalize all the time. So the wise move right now is to be patient with a strategic look towards greater success, rather than standing here with an immediate success that's so much smaller than what we can produce if we just look down the road.
The big success down the road, as you mentioned yesterday, was the fact that we're taking money from delinquent properties and putting it into the demo process, but eventually those properties will turn around and start, somebody will be paying taxes on them again, which right now they're not. So hopefully...
The long strategic look is that these properties become more productive. They are zero productive today.
Besides blight, we're not collecting taxes. We're not getting much of anything.
Almost every one of these properties has backed taxes due. So they're not producing anything for the community except blight to begin with. It's rare that a property that we've torn down hasn't been delinquent in taxes, but it has occurred. And I will tell you to date, to date, we have received about $130,000 back from bank-owned parcels. Uniquely, the banks don't have an idea of the degraded condition of some of their REOs, but the tax bill is on autopilot in their system, so the tax check goes out. They're not actively dealing with these bad properties, but they are paying the taxes on them. So when we put a lien on them after they've been condemned and demoed, we put the lien out there, the bill goes over there, and automatically it's with their system, it gets paid. So we've been picking up these liens. These are good properties for us to be demoing. Now, the problem there is they're sitting in limbo, but at least the taxes are being paid and the liens have been paid on the property. And if we have to maintain them, that's fine, because those liens will be paid, too.
And we've gotten rid of the blight in the neighborhood.
And we've gotten rid of the blight in the neighborhood.
Most of the bonuses, all the people that have worked on this, people earning money doing all the demos, plus the income taxes paid to the communities we're doing the teardowns. And so we're recycling the money locally that wasn't generated here locally.
It's churning. There's a lot of churning of the dollars, and there's going to be millions and millions more churning here. The leverage money that we use now from DRETAC is going to leverage five to 10 times its value and then churn in our community to stimulate economic development. But we have to have the long look. We have to look five to 10 years. We cannot look one, two, or three years. We have to have an idea of this having some staying power with regard to doing this. But I believe that eventually that these things will sunset, too. This is not going to be something that can go in perpetuity. You can only tear down so many houses. You can only repair so many, green so many lots and do so. So there's going to be a day when we're concluded on this. But while there's dollars available, we need to position Lorraine County at the forefront of the grab for those dollars. I certainly don't want to be in the back of the line and they run out by the time they get there. And lots of communities are going to find themselves in that position, not Lorraine County. I guarantee that.
Thank you for the update. That's my report.
That's your report?
Thanks for doing my report for me.
Sorry.
No.
Very good land bank meeting.
I asked you.
Also this past week, NOAACA had their annual summit. It was moved to September from normally in June because of our new director that we had hired, but very informative. They had federal transportation people in, talking about how Ohio really doesn't fund our public transit in regards to the Greater Cleveland RTA, which is one of the largest. It's less than 1% of their funding. But I want to say congratulations. A friend of mine, colleague on NOAACA many years, Lake County engineer Jim Gills, was nominated for and won the Walter Earnfeld Award for Regional Collaboration. He does a great job. He works really hard at air quality and putting the projects together through the tech. Extremely talented person. Congratulations to him. Just a great guy. Again, the land bank was a great meeting. But Jerry, I spoke to you and Prosecutor Will on Monday. I have a major concern. I've got a lot of phone calls, actually a pretty terse email from a pretty prominent person in our community Lori and I both received. The payout from the county auditor's office to the former county auditor using, I'm assuming, the real estate assessment fund, the property tax fund, to the tune of a thousand hours, or eighteen thousand bucks for four hours' work. Dan Kleymas sent Lori and I this email. Dan Kleymas is the president of Lorraine National Bank. "I am very distressed to read the article concerning Mark Stewart in The Chronicle this morning. Is this story true?" And this is in regards, Dan sits on Team Lorraine County with us, and he also sits on Team ME, our economic development entity for our 18 county region. And we asked Team Lorraine County to endorse our issue one, the proposed increase to the sales tax while lowering the property tax. "How can you ask the business community and the general population to support a tax increase and waste money like this? Please provide me an explanation that justifies what appears to be a favor being offered to a friend at the expense of taxpayers. Thank you for your insights." I know Lori emailed back. I spoke to Dan a half hour, forty-five minutes last night and explained to him this falls under the special funds that the state legislature gives different political offices in regards, even though the county commissioners are the budgetary authority for the county, there are funds out there that judges have their special funds that we don't see how they're appropriated. And the auditor's office has a real estate assessment fund, the collection of all the real estate taxes. Well, what happens is the auditor runs that. That doesn't come through our appropriation process whatsoever. It doesn't get on our general fund or even as a special fund, as a county money that's being appropriated. So it's something that the county commissioners don't see, even though we're supposed to be in charge of the county budget. These private funds they have, they don't give us any ability to oversee them. So when these things happen, we don't know they're happening until we read them in the paper when an investigative reporter finds them. So I have major concerns. And then I go back speaking to you and Dennis the other morning, Jerry, and my question being is, in 2005, the Board of Commissioners, myself, Lori Kokowski, and Betty Blair, Tom wasn't here at the time, we changed our policy that any new hire can only be paid out 250 hours of sick time. My interpretation of it, after speaking with Mr. Cordez, who was also our former HR person back in the mid-'90s prior to being the county administrator, is that he retired in December, and he would be a new hire in April when this happened, that there's no way he should ever be able to be paid out the thousand hours. If anything, even though I don't think it's quite right, his cap should have been 250 hours, and I think we should look at going back to collect our money back for the taxpayers. Did you have enough time to look at that for me?
The other thing I want to ask you, too, is are you allowed to only work one day and be able to cash out? I mean, isn't there a time period specified as to how long you have to be an employee before you can cash out?
Well, to answer the second question first is, no, there isn't any limitation.
Okay.
And that's by revised code. That's not local policy.
Right. As to the first question, and I dropped off some information with Mr. Snodgrass to give him a chance to look at it. Anytime you're dealing with this kind of thing, you have to take a look at when somebody, what their situation was when they left office previously. But I believe on the information I have to this point that our policy is now that the 250 hours is the limit, and at least of the facts that I know right now, it appears that that would be applicable to Mr. Stewart's payout. So like I said, I want to extend Mr. Snodgrass the courtesy to check out some background information before I can give you a definitive answer on that. But certainly, the policy that's in effect now is 250 hours is a cap, and we have in our policy a definition that says somebody who left the county and came back after 2005 is considered a new employee and subject to that limitation.
Those are the things you and I did when we were sitting here to straighten out the mess. Because I was talking to Jim earlier today, and back in '94, Jim, can you restate what those, or '93, whenever Mr. Stewart took office, he could take his vacation time entering office. You could not collect your sick time except upon retirement, which he didn't have enough years to retire at the time, I understand.
The policy that was in place for a number of years was upon retirement, you could cash out half of 920 hours for a payout of 460 hours at your rate of pay at the time of retirement. That was the policy.
Well, that was the other question I got asked, because I've been hit pretty hard. This was a pretty big article, because I've been out trying to talk about our issue one. This has come up in some of those conversations. His rate of pay at the eighteen dollars and change an hour that The Chronicle found, does that reflect what he was making in the '90s, or is that a new hire pay and that's the rate of pay currently in the Board of Revision Office?
My, and I did clarify that with Mr. Snodgrass. His, he indicated to me it was the same. Not what he got paid as auditor, but what he got paid in his position as deputy auditor. So
As an employee back in.
I, to my knowledge at this point, I believe he's okay on that, that score.
Okay. So when do you plan to hear back from auditor Snodgrass?
Hopefully, hopefully within a couple of days.
Well, hopefully we can recoup this money, because, you know, people in the community, they really don't care what fund, you know, that we have special funds over here and special, it's county money, county employees, you know. It just makes the county look bad. It's just a black eye for us. And especially, like Ted said, we're trying to promote a sales tax and a decrease in property tax, and then you have things like this happen, and people think we're just wasting money. And we really don't have any control over that. So I would love to see the taxpayers be reimbursed for that amount.
The real problem is down in Columbus, you got the legislators, they don't want to do anything because it's going to impact them. As far as, you know, with the PRS and everything else going on, there's a ton of wasteful spending down there just with the retirement system. And they want to blame the employees for it. Well, really, it's the elected officials that are the cause for it. And it's just a shame that you don't have legislators down there that want to do something.
Well, I think that's what's happened with the legislators, because you get county auditors and county recorders and county treasurers get elected to statewide offices, legislators, then the state house, you know, as our representative of the centers, and then they make rules and give priorities when there's more of them. Currently, there's only eight, I believe, county commissioners in the state legislature between the senate and the house of representatives.
Right.
It's overrun by other offices, and then they make laws and rules that benefit the constituency they came from or their peer group.
Right.
And it's sort of shortchanged. Look, we've been fighting that for years at the Commissioners Association, that those should be part of the budgetary process and be clear and transparent to the public. Even though we can't appropriate them, it should say, "There's this much in real estate assessment, and these are the numbers, and there's this much in computer funds, and there's this much in special funds," that it shows to the public, and it doesn't. And that's a major problem. Some people say, "We're not transparent. A lot of that stuff we don't have any control over."
Ted, you know that on the major reforms on the retirement system failed to properly address the abuse of the elected officials at the state level that had feasted on the system at the expense of the employees and then the public sector employees that are the ones demonized for the failure of that system. It is a failure of leadership on the people we've sent to Columbus to properly deal with it. When elected officials can buy 35% more retirement at a very inexpensive rate and thereafter work through very small jobs, and then sometime in the future, work at a large job and retire at a higher salary that has not been properly funded to be at that high salary, somebody else is going to have to pay the freight on that. And they did not address that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry I'm being vocal on that, but I'm one of those employees that seems to be demonized for the, excuse me, inability of the elected officials to be treated as ordinary people down in Columbus. And I have no problem saying that, and I have no problem telling them that, and I have no problem writing letters to them on that. And that goes from the governor on down through all the state senate and the state house. They put the burden of all of those changes onto the employees, but they failed to address the real problems of the system. I will give them one thing they did. They changed the averaging from three years to five years, so that will diminish a bit. But prior to that, it was really a face-in-the-trough feed fest.
How do you really feel, Jim?
Well, you're...
End of my report. Go ahead, Commissioner Williams. I'll wait for an answer from Mr. Anderson.
Actually, I agree with Mr. Cordez on that. It's a shame. It's not, you know, you put the politics aside. It's both parties that are doing this, and they're screwing it up, and it's actually impacting the employees. It's impacting the county budgets and impacting local budgets and...
Thompson, independent now. He bashed them both.
Well, you know...
Go ahead.
If you really want to, I get really upset that we have to take over the municipalities' hours, and when they come in, that we're actually paying out their vacation time and everything, too. And that comes on the county's payroll. So if you have somebody from a city that comes here to work at the county, we have to pay their hours that they come over, and that's in the Ohio Revised Code. And that's something that needs the change on there. I mean, the cities, villages, whoever, they should have to pay it, not the county.
Or it should be prorated.
And actually, and Commissioner Williams has touched on another delicate point. We have to take it. They don't.
They don't. Right.
And therefore, it becomes challenging to, when you're looking for talent that has prior service, because you're taking on a tremendous amount of prior liability. The reform that needs to be put out there is in civil service reform. I am tired of hearing complaints about what we do. Let me state this, and I'll tell you how I feel about it. We provide the minimum guaranteed benefits demanded by the Ohio Revised Code to our employees. With the exception of two holidays, additional holidays that have been won through union contracting, because we can't have one-third of the workforce trying to work while two-thirds of it is off on a guaranteed benefit through a union contract. Other than that, we have not increased vacation. We have not increased sick time. We have not increased any of the benefits except to the statutory minimums required by the Ohio Revised Code. So when I see the blogs and criticizing the Board of Commissioners for the sick days employees get or the vacation days they get, you're not being generous. You're following the law.
Correct.
I won't mention the person, but we had one individual that retired that came over from the municipality. We paid over $30,000 to that individual. And that was time that they actually brought over, which, again, we had no say. It's just something that comes out of our pocketbook from the county. So moving on to my report, Friday, I actually had a conference call with the company that's actually looking at relocating here. Further details will come out, and I'll bring you up to date once we get more commitment from them. And Friday evening, went to the Hispanic Fun out at LCC. Great event, wonderful dinner. I want to thank Tim Carion for inviting me to it. Did a great job there. Just wonderful program. Keep up the good work there. And right now, we're in the Hispanic month, September 15th through October 15th. A lot of festivities going on. Make sure you try to catch one of them going on. And I don't know if you've been to this, the Charleston Coffee House on Broadway.
Fabulous.
You see the condos?
Yeah.
Aren't they amazing?
Gary Davis.
Davis. He's done a wonderful job there, and he's been doing these comedy nights, bringing in local talent. Went to the one Friday night after the Hispanic Fun. And just great group of comedians out there. Second time I attended. They're going to be doing a third event coming up. I actually invited the organizer to come up, tell us when it's going to go on. I like to see a lot of people come out. It's just, it's great to be downtown Lorraine, sitting in the coffee house, having some cheesecake, drinking the coffee, and watching local talent. And we have some very funny young talent here in Lorraine County.
Are they doing that every Friday?
They've been doing it, they have a schedule going on. They're working on, the first two worked out, so they're looking at doing a third one. And I gave them my contact information. They're going to come up to a meeting and talk about it, so.
I thought they were going to televise our meeting as part of the evening's events.
The comedy hour.
I meant Ted.
I was going to say it. I don't want anybody to assume where you're thinking.
But again, if you get a chance to, go out and check out a good local company. So end of my report.
Tomorrow from six to seven, commissioners will be in Eva Lake City Hall, their town hall here, meeting. The commissioners will also sign up for retirement proclamation. Pauline Davis, ten years at JFS. Board correspondents?
Move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? It's like it's all just about friends and family. You look new, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, where you from?
Yeah, I'm Diana Sparrow from Peck Schaefer.
Oh, okay.
I was here to follow up on the Catholic.
Just in case I hadn't done my job correctly, she was going to bail me out. So appreciate you being here. And you guys working with us down in Peck Schaefer.
Yes, we appreciate your help.
We would like Catholic help on this to move some of their bond working back to Lorraine County. So if you let them know how friendly and flexible we are, because we haven't done any issuance on conduit bonds for them in a while, so. All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion to go on executive session as outlined by the county administrator and the county prosecutor.
Second.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.